Congratulations to the flagrant of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to move right into our commissions, state track is first. Okay, recently Dutch Point Track Team competed at State. Middle Point has a state champion that was a contributor to that. For those of you that don't know the story, Nicole and nine other athletes all cleared the high jump bar of five foot two. As a tiebreaker, they moved it to five-four and nobody cleared it at five-four. They came back to five-three and nobody cleared it at five-three and they put it back at five-two. And Nicole was the only one to make it at five-two, so she broke the tie, became state champion. Mr. Eisenzimmer in the back, who's been here many a time with all sorts of things, you want to share your state track experience this year?
Yeah, we got fourth, I mean, nevermind, sorry. We ran the four-by-four, Blazes Waters was on that, and we got 13th.
A good, solid representation, a four-by-eight came in second place, the Dutch Point four-by-eight relay team came in second place. So a very successful season and continue to support that co-op as we move forward.
And I think you got Blair placed 12th in the 400, right? I think Blair Waters.
And Blazes up there.
Yep.
Yeah? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Several of the state middle school track athletes here, do you want to do rock, paper, scissors to see who'd like to talk about your experience?
So I ran the, me and Olivia both three in a mile, and Olivia got seventh in a mile and I got 11th place in the mile. She had a time of 5:36 and I had a time of 5:42. And then we both ran the 800. I was 15th in the 800 and she was 19th in the 800.
Excellent. And Olivia, what can you tell us?
I qualified for discuss with the highest throw overall and then made it to the top 10 and drew and won that with my personal best throw of 833.
So congratulations to Mr. Well, I can attest to the hours of practice that I witnessed on the football field, so I'll turn it over to Angela.
So this past fall, AJ joined Belmont Special Olympics program. It says Belmont, but I actually have nine athletes, four of them are from other communities, so we welcome anybody. AJ started in track this spring with us and he picked up the shot put right away, so his dad has been working religiously with him on the football field, on the old football field on the shot, and the 100-meter dash. So this past weekend, he participated at summer games, he qualified from that, from a regional entry meet, so he was one of 1,500 athletes across the state at Special Olympics Summer Games, and he brought home bronze medals in both of his divisions, the 100-meter run and the shot put.
I've got to tell you, this is new to me, but I'm going to ask Mrs. Niehaus to talk a little bit about the contest and...
Well, they house sponsoring the annual poster contest, and the thing usually has something to do with record building. This year, Bowman entered the contest, they told the kids about it, I think it was the next day or the day after you had your entry ready for him. He's quite the budding artist. He wrapped it back and we submitted it as an older level and moved on, and he was the state winner.
I know we have some of these people in the audience. Can you... Yep, Madeline, can you tell me exactly what it was you did?
I wrote a book for the Delta Academy Game of Book Writing Contest and tied the summer first place, I don't exactly know who I tied with. My book is called The Forget Me Not.
What was your book about?
It was about this girl who has a photographic memory and she moves this new place and she forgets all her family, and then she was trying to get home and she sees a Forget Me Not flower, and so then she, all her memory comes back and she writes.
Congratulations. Okay, Miss Doyle?
Um, so the Wisconsin Farm Bureau each year puts on an essay contest for fourth and fifth graders, and the topic changes each year, and this year's topic was called "Making It Happen at the Farmer's Market." So this year, our fourth graders worked really hard at learning the ins and outs of a farmer's market and what farmers and producers do in the winter months, early spring, to grow fresh produce to sell at the farmer's market for consumers. We even invited our local gardener and farmer Jenny Bondi into the classroom, and she shared with students what she does to get ready for the Middle Point Farmer's Market. And so at the county level, we received just over about 100 essays, and the Iowa County Farm Bureau selects one county winner, and that was Lily Hottacher in fourth grade. And then from there, each county submits their winning essay to the district level, and in Wisconsin Farm Bureau, there's nine districts, we're in District Three, and Lily's essay also won at the district level. So from there, her essay went to the state level. She was not a state winner at the state level, but nine really good essays were submitted to the state level. Overall, there were over 2,000 essays submitted across the state of Wisconsin. So every year, the essay topic changes, and there's always a book of the year that goes right along with it, so we love that.
She's in softball.
State golf. State golf, do we have any golfers out? We have one qualifier, Simon Mitchell, our team. The team came in third place, so they just missed out qualifying as a team for State, but Simon was able to qualify as an individual. Vicki, you want to share how golf kind of wrapped up a little interesting twist on the game?
Yeah, I got up there Tuesday morning and just got to the clubhouse and the horn sounded to call the golfers out because of weather coming in, and it just poured for over an hour. So the coaches met with the WIA, so they called it after 27 holes. Normally, they golf 36, so they called it after 27, and Simon finished ninth out of, I think it was either 52 or 53 golfers, 52 golfers.
So a very good showing for Simon golfing out of zone, so congratulations to Simon. Let's move on to state honors band. Mr. Nevers? Mr. Nevers here to speak on?
No, I don't think he was able to be here.
I don't know if anybody here can speak to the Dunn family. Yes, go ahead.
So Lily is a seventh grader of Buddhist, and in April, she went to Sun Prairie and auditioned for the middle-level state honors band, which is sixth through eighth graders. And they have 1,100 kids auditioning across the state, and they take around 300 kids for the band. And so Lily made it this year, and 61 flutes auditioned and they took 16.
So congratulations.
So she will be headed to Wanakee on October 26th to perform.
Bill, yep.
A few of his traps.
All right, we had state trap shoot Saturday, about 1,500 kids shot. Brayden, Abby from Laphawk, who's on our team, and Carl. Brayden got 15th, tied for 15th in State, he shot a 97 out of 100. That tells you how close the competition is. We got 25th, but we were 30 points out of first. So competition out of 80 teams, or almost 80 teams. So competition was great, the weather was great. The coaches I had this year, Rob Besser, Randy, or Randy Lai, Ron Lee and his wife Lori, Lori does our secretary work, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for her, and we volunteered her to be our... We had a raffle this year, we covered their half of ammo, all their plays, and we paid for registration at State, where we reimbursed them next, I forgot to give these to them at State, found them in my truck after everybody left. It was a great year, I think next year with our raffle, we should be able to cover everything for the kids, so they shouldn't have to have any money to be able to shoot trap. Anything else, guys? We shot in the rain, we shot in the snow, and now the ass took over. Anything else? You guys like it?
Yeah.
Black people, if there was.
There was.
Also, we had Jacob Mellon from Monroe, so we had three kids, Carl graduated now, so we're very happy having kids from other districts since they don't have the program.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you for being part of our team.
Bill, I put the seat plates in the fertilizer box.
Okay, we'll move on. Establishing our board meeting dates and times. I had a conversation with the mayor, and one of the things that he had talked about was holding off us making a decision because they might be moving their board meetings, city board meetings to Tuesday nights. I was talking to their legal representation, their district, or the city clerk, that was the conflict for them, and that's why they ended up moving it to Monday night. Debbie doesn't work for the city, and that coincided, so then they're actually looking at moving their meeting dates to Tuesday nights of that second week, so he recommended we don't do anything with our dates at this time.
I move the dates as listed.
Yeah, any other discussion?
Stefas?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Basti?
Yes, well, she carried six to one. For all of the minutes, we have a motion to that.
Will you approve the minutes?
I'll sign it.
Any comments or corrections? Okay, let's have Angie please.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Stefas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basti?
Yes. Board communications received. I don't have anything to put out there. Okay, we'll move on to citizens' communications. Anybody to sign up? Joelle?
No.
Yeah, I know Kyle's asked to speak.
Floor's yours.
I'll try and keep this rather brief, but if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me, or we'll rip down the road, so we can come back and talk at another meeting. I just want to talk to everybody about negotiated construction management approaches to referendum projects. Some people call them qualifications, negotiated qualifications, kind of saying the one thing. On the second page, you kind of see just the bullet points I want to go through, which are negotiated CM benefits. And basically, floor number one, budget accountability, how project costs evolve, multiple CM bids versus negotiated CM, how inflation affects these construction projects, local involvement, different construction and drawing architectural schedules, and just the market status and picking your team. So we go to the next page, you see a bunch of bubbles and diagrams, this is how project costs evolve, so I really wanted to hit home here, it's just budget accountability. If you start from the far left side, this is where you went to referendum at with conceptual budget, you didn't have an architect go do construction documents and get a hard bid on this. Basically, you had them do projects based on other projects, so that's how you came with cost per foot. And the next levels following it are the top ones, are the budgeting, and then the bottom is the schematic design development and construction, just the different steps that are taken in a construction process, where you can basically take little timeouts or not even timeouts, you can keep drawing, but have someone budget the project to make sure it is following in line with what you promised your citizens, is it going to cost you 11.92 million? And then along the bottom, it's just kind of how different cost methodologies are gone through and how they're pulled together. So just having construction managers put these numbers together is a lot more reliable because they're bidding projects every week, every other week, and you know the current status of all the different contractors and suppliers, and it can really help you hit your budgets. On the next page, it's just the different scenarios going through, whether you have the multiple CM bidders on a project. So the way you have it outlined in your referendum right now is you were taking the time from referendum till somewhere end of the year, or January, and bidding this project out, and starting the construction sometime in spring. And what I've outlined here, this first page is just lining up the columns, one, two, three, four, of the different bidders. And these are different categories of work that people have to bid on. You have your site work, you have mechanical, electrical, plumbing, which is HJC, electrical plumbing, you have some glass and glazing, siding, roofing, concrete, you name it. And what we're trying to point out here is, you have four people bid on this, all of those bids are going to end up disseminated throughout all those contractors. Not one contractor is going to get the low bid in every single category. So yes, you will have a low bid in January, but that's not the most cost-effective way of getting there. The next page is outlining when you have the qualifications-based CM or the negotiated CM, and how it stacks up against the competitive contractor bidding scenario. Basically, you're taking all those low bids from all those different contractors, shifting it over to one CM. It's not getting one or two or three low bids, they're getting all the low bids, because all the bids are coming to one location. The next page kind of outlines that without having all the contractors there, but we're just telling you, if you can single source where all these bids go, if not only a low bid going to contractor one, and contractor two and three, they all go in that CM. So that's the most cost-effective way of going down the process. And we're talking about inflation here, I just did a copy of ENR's Engineering News Records report from 2008, it just shows you how you factor construction inflation. So what you do if you ever want to say, hey, how's it compared from 2010 to eight, or 15 to 2010, or even go back from six months ago, you just take the closest date to your day and divide it by whatever month back, whatever year you want to go by. So what I did is, I stood an inflation factor for 2019, 2018, and 2017, it's on the left-hand side in the middle. Basically, right now, Engineering News Records is saying we're seeing a 3.4% inflation for 2019, 2018 was 3.2, and 2017 was 2.7. Then along the bottom, I just wanted to show you, hey, you pass your referendum in 2018, and someone was saying, if you build this next year, roughly this is what it's going to cost. But right now, if you're delaying that by nine months, 12 months, you could obviously see, if it was 3.4%, you're getting 405,000 less in building program by waiting or bidding it out next year, it's potentially somewhere between 400,000 to $700,000 less in building program because you're waiting. So I'm just trying to say here, some people like to say, haste makes waste, and if you run through the whole process, you're going to make bad decisions. If you hire a construction manager that does this all the time and works with your architect, you can ask the questions an appropriate amount of time and get the construction sequence to get it going sooner, because not all the decisions have to be made right now, you can make those in stages throughout the design. Local involvement, this is a big thing, especially down in the southwest part of the state. People that work in the southwest part of the state know all the smaller contractors that can probably handle projects like yours, or at least they can bring them to the table. If you do a competitive bid process in January, all those other contractors will just find whoever they want to get bid on the project, and whether your contractors are involved or not, basically, you're losing out of the chance of making sure your local contractors have a shot at this job. We've had it where we've worked with others, this is just Kramer Brothers thing, we were in Fenimore, we lined up a bunch of site work contractors, we asked the school, hey, are we missing anybody? They gave us the name of one of their contractors when it came to bidding that out, they were actually number two, and the school district got to make a choice of, do we pay a touch more for the local guy, or do we just take the low number and that's what we're going to do? Obviously, every school district's different, they can make that change or choice. The following page, I just want to show you a schedule comparison of doing the negotiated construction manager, or again, the qualifications-based, or if you go with this traditional design bid-build approach. The one on the top, you can look at the design, you can look at the construction, how it overlaps the design to compress that construction schedule and the whole time of the project, that's roughly about 17 months. If you don't believe this can be done, with a contractor like us, we just did this at Platteville a couple years ago, they passed a referendum in April, we got on the team that summer, started construction in October for $15 million worth of work, and finished it by the following August. If you go down the approach you have for design bid-build now, you don't bid it out until December or January, you're probably not going to start construction until it crawls out of the ground in April, and then you're going to lose an entire school year of being able to utilize the building. So this is something that's been done a number of times, I have a map later on that kind of shows all the school districts in your area and how many have done the negotiated CM, or the, whatever the old design bid-build approach. Market status, picking your team, construction market, I can tell you, we do a lot of work in the southwest part of the state, a lot of subcontractors, contractors are booked up for the next six months or a year, are pretty damn full. So what we're trying to say is, if you just do this whole, we're going to line up five bidders to bid on this project in January, you might lose out on some contractor's interest in bidding on your project because they're either going to be full up on it, or they'll take on other projects that are more worth of their time, because a lot of contractors, especially in K-12 school projects, are team-oriented, they want to be in the project while the design is being evolved, helping provide their input on constructability, helping provide a budgetary expertise, and it's the fastest instruction way of doing the whole process. And if you do go down the bid route, you could get a team that you don't know if you like the project manager in that team, you don't know if you like the superintendent, or it's just a low bidder, and you kind of just kind of deal with what we get. The next page, this is specific to us, but there's a lot of school districts in this area that have gone down the qualifications, negotiated CM route. I can remember one, maybe two, in the last five years that didn't do that, they just said, hey, we're going to bid to the market, it's a million and a half dollar project, we'll see where it comes in at. When you have a project that's as complicated as yours with an addition to renovation, you probably want someone on board helping you out with the constructability of all the design to make sure it can be done as cost-effective as possible and as streamlined as possible. So another school that's left out of here at River Ridge, they negotiated, Belmont, working right down the road with them, down the team for them for nine months, this is not necessarily just pitch on us, but you go up the Highway 151, there's two other schools that are going negotiated CM route. So that's kind of my pitch on it, as much as we love that Kramer Brothers doing it, we're just trying to help you out with going through what's the pros and cons of doing it one way or another. If anyone has a con to this approach, I'd like to hear it, but that's just kind of the way we do a lot of it.
Other questions?
Yeah.
I assume this is free, what was the billing process here?
For the negotiated CM? Just said that. So I have this thing, is this a, I'm going to just pass one down. Everyone says, hey, I need a competitive process here, whether they're bidding it or just some other way of doing it. This is the way that almost everybody, when they do the negotiated or qualification-based CM, goes down. It's an issue for RFP, Request and Proposal, you can have the contractors you're inviting to propose on it, give you their experience, what's their expertise, where they're from, who the project team is, and then where you always want to know, what's the cost of working with them? They can provide their construction management fees, and then you can line them up, just like you did for your architectural process, and you can do the same thing for contractors.
But I'm not sure what your fee is, that's the thing I didn't...
No, absolutely. If we had to propose you a fee, we can do that, but we're just kind of pitching just the whole process of negotiating. the whole process of negotiating the CM.
Okay. But how are you paying that?
It's through the CM fee.
Oh, I see, gotcha, okay.
Yep. And this whole process, you can still competitively bid out all the subcontractor work, you bid out all the equipment, the material, it's just happening in a lot faster fashion, so it saves you guys time a whole school year, and it can save you money because you're avoiding the inflation, you're avoiding having your bonds issued later at probably higher interest rate. There's just a lot of pros to this approach that a lot of other school districts in the area have found to be as beneficial as well.
How do I find out the exact CM fees? Is that something I just don't, whether it's the?
When they fill this out, they can, they provide them in.
I've got a request for a bid from various companies, including Kramer.
Oh, then they put it, they tag it on there?
Yes.
And we would know how their fee stacks up against other.
I got it now.
He's just kind of getting it forward.
He's trying to tell us he should, he should have. Gotcha, yeah. Obviously ourselves, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions?
If you guys would ever like us to come back at a later date, we can talk more about it, we'd be happy to help you guys out. The biggest thing is, when you have the competitive bid situation, you can discourage a lot of contractors from getting involved because a lot of people in Madison, they do those projects, negotiating them out, everyone right down the highway, and either way, they negotiate them out because they want to have a team approach to you. They don't want to just throw a project manager or superintendent on it that maybe doesn't have the K-12 experience you're looking for, and you're going to have to work with day to day. So we're just trying to shy away from the processes that use as much.
Thanks.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Move on into items of information. Tim, right here.
Go ahead, Tim, Brad. Good evening, everybody. We're going to, everything's up on a screen here tonight. And what we've done, we've met with staff, and we've had a few different sessions with the committee. We've got a lot of good progress, I think, in terms of feedback and information, and we're not done yet, we got to get more. But we have kind of come together as a group and kind of focused on what we think is a really good direction conceptually. And it takes on a little different visual than what you saw before in your earlier scheme. I think maybe part of our thought process here was to, number one, really try to get the most bang for the buck, number one. Number two, try to integrate the addition with the existing building a little bit more than it was before. Before, you recall it was more of an appendage, if you will, addition that really didn't have a whole lot of relationship to the existing building. So that was a major goal of ours. And then, thirdly, we felt that a plan like this would be able to start to address some of the challenges we have on the site with water and some of the drainage things to the existing building that we're seeing. It gives us a little better opportunity to solve some of those problems, not only current problems, but for future down the road. And so those are three big areas of positive things that we see with this plan. And maybe I'll let Tim.
Yeah, maybe elaborate on that just a touch more. We also looked at your overall site, and being in a pretty tight urban site, we wanted to utilize as much of the site as we could. And not only up front, but give long-term master planning capabilities to this site, and make sure that we're utilizing the site, especially any flat site that we do have. So we thought using the northern portion, basically connecting, so the lighter blue to the north, we see the gym and the library space, is really the most probably underutilized part of the site right now. There is some pavement in there, it does collect the water like we talked about, but we saw opportunity to not only connect it better internally, but connect it better to the site and utilize the site a little bit better, create a little bit tighter footprint for the building. The tighter the footprint that we can achieve, the more energy efficient the building will become, the more efficient in layout, the more adjacencies that we can have from an educational programming standpoint, the more connections that we can have, the more opportunities itself. So to the north, the lighter blue is the addition part, where the gym and then the library component. The darker blue is highlighting the circulation pattern. We really took a step back and took a broad look at how people will circulate around in the building, and we really wanted to create more of a circular path to create more adjacencies. Right now, we currently have basically a double loaded corridor with classrooms on both sides of the hallway. And we wanted to really break that down and create more opportunities for more connections. So that both on the lower level and on the upper level, we have a circular pattern going around the building. And what that really does is it creates opportunities for breakout space and collaboration. We can utilize that space much more than just hallways because it's really program space. So we're using every square inch of this building. We also are creating more dynamic of a building where you can hope to separate some of the sounds within here and just isolate that as well. In the existing building, we listen to the staff, we listen to the different team members that we've been talking to, and class size has been, you know, forefront of the conversations. So we took, where we could, we took inventory of the existing building, and we're expanding the classrooms that we can within here. We want to create more equity between all the classrooms and have more adjacencies between the different grade levels. So you'll see all the grade levels are configured next to each other, so you have good adjacencies within each grade configuration. So we have grades listed within here, but we also know that we want this building to be flexible enough to have those type of adjustments over time as well. We are repurposing the existing, or at least in this plan, repurposing the existing office location. We're expanding the office. We're utilizing the lounge space, expanding the lounge, expanding the nurses' space itself, have a separate restroom for the nurses, still have the separate staff restrooms as well. And then utilizing some of the spaces where the locker rooms are for different office spaces as well, good adjacencies. And then we also have the staff workroom in close proximity as well. So one of the nice things too is we heard a lot about storage needs within the building. We wanted to definitely address as much as we can in storage, but we want to be purposeful in where we put storage and how we do that. If we just take a classroom and call it storage, just like else, it'll get full overheard. So we want to have storage throughout, but we also want to have opportunities where we can have storage in close proximity to the classrooms. So you have opportunities like that. Some of the other feedback that we've heard was when we're at in restrooms, can we have exterior access for the play field out there? So we designed the vestibule system so you can have exterior access without opening up the entire building. So some great, great feedback as we continue this dialogue. Some of the things that we've also been looking at is repurposing the existing library, and we're using that now for classroom spaces. And then if we're building a new library space here, one of the reasons we're doing that is we think it's a better location to be, become really the hub of the facility, where it'll become more of a destination piece. It'll also become a little bit bigger square footage, it'll be a higher volume space, really become a showcase of this building and really tie together all the different academic spaces a little bit better. So being that we're building on the north side, and we'll show up in 3D views as we keep going here, we want to make sure we have enough daylighting into those classrooms. So we're imagining, we're actually calling that link between the gym and the existing academic classrooms, main street. We want that really flooded with daylighting from above.
Pre-kindergarten still upstairs?
It is on the upper level.
So what did the teachers say?
We have quite a bit of feedback there, and to be honest, since we're connecting it, so we have an addition or the vestibule at the very north there, which is looking, that connects at grade. So the beauty of this building is basically both levels will feel like it's actually at grade because you have, you have connections at both levels. So those spaces, the pre-K classrooms, are a great size. We want to improve them, we'll see finishes and HVAC.
So are there, so they can come in from that side without steps?
Correct.
Okay. But to go out to recess, will be steps?
There'll still be some steps within there. So we are still a two-story building utilized. We are creating a pre-K suite just by enclosing that restroom in the hallway there and making that restroom more dedicated for pre-K use.
And is the gym a full-size gym?
So the gym, we have a full-size main court, and then the two cross courts are meant for practice, and those are full width, but they are 10 feet shorter than full length.
So that's 84 by 50, which is the playing surface out here as well.
Is there, are there, is there room for like chairs or bleachers or something?
Yep, so on the northern side, there we have 400 meters, 400 bleachers up there, enough clearances all the way around the gym.
And a stage?
We do have a location for a stage called, as well, within there, and then supporting spaces like storage.
Where's cafeteria?
So cafeteria is on the upper level. Same location. We want to improve the acoustics in there.
Are you remodeling? Are you, are you anything?
Or refurbish that as well.
Yep. Going to get a lot of upgrades in there.
One of the things that, through some of these little conversations, we want to isolate that current cafeteria multipurpose room so that you can access it after hours without going, opening up the entire facility. So we're actually proposing to add a restroom to that location as well, make it a more multipurpose, and then have a more direct connection. So on this upper level, you'll see the same circular loop highlighted in the darker blue that we're creating, and then that connection up to the north. We do that main street, that link between there, that's going to be a two-story volume space with light coming in from above. So those classrooms and all of those spaces are very open, and I think maybe the next images will show that prior to the best year. So this is where we're looking, so it's still very early in the concept planning, but it starts to get spatially what we're looking at. So what we're, we're looking at using these connections and these different walkways to really tie together these different components of the building themselves. So we see the gym actually having some daylighting into the gym. The library is on the upper image off to the right, so you have daylighting from above and really connect that facility and connect it to the existing building, you know, really in some kind of way.
So that's kind of our initial concepts that we're pursuing. Our intention is now to start to really hone in on the site and see how that site is going to work the optimum best in terms of drop-off, parent drop-off, buses, and all those kinds of things are going to start to get incorporated. Then we're going to have more meetings with staff to get a little bit more feedback and input, and again, it's just kind of like making Brad, you just keep working on it.
Any information of the foundation?
Obviously, cleared the geotechnical borings on Friday, Thursday and Friday, and we're waiting for the report there. So we did the geotechnical and also a 3D scan of the building. So between those two components, we have a really good understanding, not as good as expert vision, but a, well, good understanding of what's going on there.
One of the things that came up, I think, was the classroom sizes are not being enlarged that much, is that right, Tim? Or am I getting that wrong?
Quite a few of the classrooms are being enlarged, so we're taking recommendations of what we would do even in new construction, and really having those class sizes be appropriate for those spaces. We are working within an existing building footprint, so there are some limitations of just the footprint. But where possible, we are enlarging them. So on the first level, we're taking three classrooms, according to the two on both sides of the wing, and then on the upper, upper level, we're doing similar conversations.
Some of our goals here too is to try to make the, and I think we talked about this, but the addition and the existing really transform the existing space to make it seamless so it feels like it's pretty much all new building when it's all said and done, and it works together. That's an important piece.
Everett, if you go to the second, the upper floor, the lower level, all the rooms are now quite large, that age level. If you look in the bottom of the, three or four rooms there, those three rooms in the bottom are the same size as.
Same size, okay, correct.
So those are the rooms that have not been expanded.
Those aren't changing, okay.
Right now, we have a third grade in, and we did a fifth, Tim changed to third, smaller bodies. We talked about, Tim mentioned, getting more mobile and furniture that can store things inside of it.
Oh, sure.
And just kind of shrink near the size of the furniture so you, or like the teacher's desks and some of the desks that are in there can be really spaced.
Efficient, I guess, if you. What we're seeing as an overall trend too is you're definitely utilizing furniture for different sort of solutions. We're also seeing much more utilization of these collaboration areas or breakout areas. We're utilizing the hallways in much more of a purposeful way. So you can actually, even in new construction, we're actually designing classrooms to be actually very similar in the size because of those capabilities.
So where does all the kids' clothing and, you know, the current poly cubby disaster, where do they all go in this design?
We have more opportunities to spread them out.
That's what I just, I didn't see where that is.
Yeah, because we're creating those cross links, we can spread those out a little bit better. So we, I guess that's really the next level of planning is.
Like where do you stick all that stuff?
Furniture is going to be a big part of the budget too. We want to make sure we budget appropriate money to be able to get some of the things like Tim was talking about, appropriate sized furniture, movable furniture to make that space really dynamic, to be able to utilize in a variety of ways and make it very flexible.
So the investments that we're making in the existing building in particular, we want to be very strategic and make sure that the money goes a long ways for the investments that we are making. So every wall is very purposeful if one of you.
Yeah. But basically, one of the things eliminated is that previous alternative bus routes, and we're talking about one-way traffic on two streets, eliminating the expense of that.
Correct. And I think from a planning standpoint, I think that's, there's a lot of conversations, a lot of them are parties, I think that's the direction we keep proceeding in. So there is expense there. The big, the big unknown would be the foundations.
Yeah.
Can you scroll back up to the library? Looks like that was one of the things that was made the change from the last set out.
Yep.
Could you just explain the classroom?
Yeah.
I didn't know what the second word is.
Yeah, so we have a classroom slash maker space within there, it's basically a flexible, flexible classroom. So when we say a library, you know, a lot of things happen in a library, it's very much multipurpose. We're actually having conversations, you know, is that the right home for intervention space? You know, we want to make that really the destination, that's really what we're trying to achieve.
And then again, to enter this building, let's say I'm a stranger from somewhere in its half of the line, no one seems to know where to go. So is this going to be somehow altered so that you know where the heck to go into this thing?
Yeah, me and you, we had that same, we both had that same. What we're really trying to do is have conversations, you know, is there, it's where the visitor stalls go. So we add some visitor stalls if that becomes a one-way street up front, and that would really help that, adjust that situation. Other things that we're looking at are canopy, is, you know, really making sure this is the front door.
Yeah. And then the pickup now is really, in my mind, marginal. I mean, it works because there's a tremendous amount of teacher time. As I come pick up kids there, and is there any part of that design being involved here too?
Absolutely. So yeah, we're looking at the site, a lot of that will have to do with really can we have that playground space be dedicated just for payoff? And I know later on, we have a conversations about potential other properties, and that will help to inform that as well. So yes, very much, we're looking at that, we do want to improve that as well.
And in that link, you've got collaboration and actually have furniture out there where we're able to.
Yep.
And that's big enough that we're.
Yeah, so those spaces.
Have we had issues prior with having some stuff in the hall and not being able to?
Yeah, I think I have some dimensions on there, but they're almost 20 feet, 20 feet wide within there. And really, with no cubbies or anything else in there, it really does lend itself to that type of space.
And real quick, Matt, are you, with your research on third teacher, and you sent that article out on like the six things, is this kind of in line with?
I haven't.
Those ideas?
I haven't. I guess I haven't correlated the two yet. I would say anytime we tap for feedback, Tim or Brad, and adjustments, I understand there's constraints. It's hard to visualize at this point because we're just kind of at that, that level of detail, so kind of waiting on the foundation one.
But I guess I'm just, you're good with where we're at now? Just driving with the idea of where we're at. I'm not asking you to sign off.
With my video.
A little work will be done, right?
Yeah, it just, the one thing I share with Tim, he knows, is the size of the classrooms. I get you can utilize space better, but you're still looking at 750 square feet. You wrote an article where, you know, kids are afforded less space in some of these small classrooms than prisoners are in, in the cells, so, you know.
Yeah, we're, right now, we're talking about concept, and those are the next levels of detail, once we get into. Once we get into the actual planning, we'll be able to study every opportunity to make every classroom as big as possible within a budget. Because now we're going to start putting budget to this and we'll be able to really learn a lot more and make good decisions. And really kind of hone in on a lot of the specifics like that.
Any other questions?
I got a question on the gym space. This design looks awesome, looks like you did a very efficient job accommodating what they wanted to do. With the gymnasium space, this isn't targeted toward the competition gym part, but when you drop a curtain, which I was going to be in there, do you know roughly what space you're going to have from the curtain to the playing court or the cross court? Because I just want to make sure the school knows that, hey, if you have five feet, this is what you can do for chairs or you have ten feet or just so you have it now. Obviously, if you guys design it further and have to try and expand it, it's not going to be easy.
So right now it's set up for, it's set up for practice court, so we have three foot clearance around the design. So it's very, it's a great size elementary gym and very good size appropriate for this age level. But it does live itself to very much district wide use. We're having conversations about, you know, are there other opportunities to utilize it even more than just basketball, to really utilize that space much more.
And even something like that, you know, again, that's getting into the detail. The next level of design, we'll kind of go through all of those specifics with you. And we'll be able to make good decisions on, well, we think we need a little bit more there, space, or we can do with a little less. You know, all those things get done at the next, next level.
Question that was brought to my attention was, I guess, twofold. Is it possible to can, to still get natural lighting to the library and in essence, put a ceiling on it? So that there's a second floor capability for a couple of classrooms and storage, whatever the case may be. I mean, I don't know if that's, if that's possible based on the elevations on that north side of the building, but that was brought up recently.
Yeah, I think that could be an opportunity. We could either structure it that way to be able to support that. We do want to make sure that if we want to master plan that or have that conversation, we can definitely carry that forward. But yes, we can get daylighting into really both spaces. It could be as simple as putting a beam pocket in there or you add beams later, I mean, it could be a very straightforward conversation.
We're also laying it out, you see on the left side of the drawing there, there's a potential for additional classrooms. So we don't want to cut you short, you know, ten, twenty years from now. We want to have the ability to add four classrooms in this case fairly easily without a whole lot of effort, whether it's now or in the future.
And will the building have cooling, AC when you're, it's all said and done, like the whole entire building?
Correct, yeah, so upgrading the HHS system and then we're also upgrading the electrical system. The electrical, really the whole.
Will it heat and cool?
Do you guys typically get community input during this design process and if so, when and how do you plan on doing that?
Absolutely, we want as much input as we can. So now, you know, this is really the first unveiling, you know, publicly of this and I think now would be a perfect time to invite greater community into this. To really get more input. You know, we welcome feedback and I think the more feedback, the more conversations it can generate and the better the plan will be.
We talked about that at our last committee meeting and I think you're thinking of some dates and potential times that that would work.
Okay, so something formally might be scheduled to invite the community in, presentation, you mean?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever works.
Yeah, we're definitely for that.
Now would be the time to do that.
My next question, and I'm sorry, not at these building meetings.
No, no problem.
You know, I was, it's, I was noticing that, you know, the tentative plan, correct me if I'm wrong, is to delay the bid until January and then construction's not scheduled to be completed until fall of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Is that accurate for tentative plan?
So it'd be, we're planning to be in construction for about sixteen months. That's what we're planning, once they start. So it's really looking backwards from where we're at today and then also looking at the timeframe to do these conversations properly. And then the other part of it too is making sure when they do start construction, that they never hit with winter construction. Doing footings, foundations and October, November stuff. There is associated costs with winter conditions and erecting any kind of building like this in winter and doing it right. Starting when frost gets out in the spring. Contractors are very hungry at that timeframe. You'll get two summers in construction then, which is perfect for a project like this. So we think the timeframe is very proper for the scale of project.
Okay.
But yeah, there's, there's always conversations on, you know, working backwards in schedules as well.
Well, I, I just want to clarify because I mean, I think when the referendum passed in April, the intent was opening in the fall of twenty-twenty for the start of the twenty-twenty-one school year. And those were the discussions we had, we went to RFP for design was, was that was the intended timeline, was to be open after next summer, right? And so I just want to make sure that, I just want to understand, because that was something that all the design firms had agreed to on submitting their bid. Even knowing that we had a, I'm sorry, I was talking about the November referendum, but even knowing that we were waiting till an April referendum to pass or fail. So just help me understand better how we got from, how we kind of basically are losing another school year and how that kind of came about. Was, is it the foundation investigation that's delaying things or is just kind of a closer look at the market and, and getting the best bids or, you know?
Well, I think part of it is it's a different design. They didn't go with the same design as our last architect, so they designed it totally differently, which I think, you know, that makes a difference. Plus.
How so?
Because they weren't here during the first phase of that whole design. So they're coming in, doing a different design, meeting with people, they're doing everything kind of again, which we did discuss was going to happen most likely. Because we're having a different architect firm come in that is probably going to, they're probably going to do things differently, so it's going to take longer. I guess what I'm thinking is, are the students going to be in school during this? All the renovation process?
Correct, so that's part of the game plan and that's part of the reason why the schedule is so important to really discuss upfront as well is these are, these type of improvements are very strategic and they are also, you know, going to involve a lot of coordination with the district staff. Having those summertime periods is critical to be able to accomplish a lot of work within this. And just picking the right materials so that it can be achievable over the summer. I guess it really started with, at our kickoff meeting, we started to discuss the schedule and we all put our heads together. And I think that's where the conversation kind of ended. You know, as far as expedited schedules, anytime you expedite a schedule, especially from a contractor's standpoint, there is associated cost to expedite a schedule. We can definitely keep going down that route. However, anytime you say a contractor, you have X over days to complete a project, you know, you start forcing third overtime, you start, you know, forcing third hour shifts and, you know, different type of reasons of that where there's associated costs with that too. So it's that hands and acts and really doing it right.
And we feel that the schedule being kind of laid out is by far in the best interest of the district in terms of quality time to do the proper planning, design, communications with you and the community and not feel rushed about it, okay? We can always rush things and that's the world today, right, everybody wants to rush. But sometimes things, you know, don't go quite where you planned. So quality time in design, planning and construction drawings is going to make money on the project. You're going to see that in better quality bids, better, more competitive bidding and it just kind of carries all the way through the project in quality.
Okay, so just, just to be clear, so I mean, it's possible to do, as, as you guys said when you submitted your bid, to do this in nine to eleven months as you've done in prior projects. However, the, the increased costs associated with an expedited project, the maybe lack of bids as competitive as you would hope, the difficulty doing construction through the winter, that will all be offset in your opinion, and the inflationary costs that come with delaying the project another year. All of that in your opinion will be offset by putting more time into the design process and, and timing your bidding process at a, at a designated time where you think the market would be best?
Yes.
You understand what I mean?
Absolutely, absolutely. And there, you know, there's inflation costs, there always are inflation costs in construction. But what we see time and time again is keep putting the cart in front of the horse. And we want to make sure that we're really investigating this building. We're doing some selective, you know, demolition even right now to try to get better understanding, we'll continue to do that. That will make sure that when they do get on site, that they're efficient and that it's cost effective for the district.
You touched on it earlier, the investigation of the foundation and, and the, you know, part of the building. That information is really going to dictate how much more we can get with this project. We just have to wait for the information to come available to us.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, the schedule is very important, we're happy to keep discussing it if we want to. Long it is, you know, when the contractors are also part of best pricing as well. Winter, we live in the climate, that winter is inevitable, so I would minimize, I would minimize that time in construction and that is a big component to this as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Should we stay? Is there anyone that you wish, unless they want to see the land?
Do you want to move that land discussion up to number one so we can get, I'd like to hear HSR's opinion unless you've already received it.
Yeah, we're happy to.
You're wasted.
Move number seven up.
Can I make a motion to move item number seven?
Quickly do it.
On the budget updates. So through May, end of May of eighteen, again, we expend about just a little over seventy-five percent of the budget. If you go to this current year, we are in about seventy-nine percent of the budget. Looking at, the end of the budget year is the end of this month, June thirtieth, so there are some things that are being, I don't, I've got like some graduation bills that I'm paying and there's some other things that we're doing. Some things we're trying to pre-purchase to, to help offset where the budget is for next year. But again, you know, we're within four percent of spending between the two years. Fiscally, we're doing a very good job taking care of the district's finances, okay?
Is it too early to project a surplus?
For this year?
Yeah.
I, I would say yes, I think there might be a very small surplus at the end of this year, but I don't want to say that without Marcia sitting in the audience.
So Marcia.
I didn't know if you had discussed it or not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? We'll move on to purchase land, which is the elementary school property number seven.
So if you actually look at the, the map. You can see orientation of north on, on the bottom of the page if you hold it with preliminary on the right-hand side of north. So the track, the dark, the darkest kind of semicircle area is actually the track on the existing field, all right? So Chase Ivy is, is here, Chase is the owner of the properties. That's the only thing that is adjacent to the elementary school property right now. Let's see if I can look on Google Maps.
Chase, do you have the three lots, is that?
Yeah, only three.
Okay.
It would just be for the.
Two lots though.
It would just be for lot two and three. And then Chase also asked if, if this happens, if we would leave, is it twenty foot still in play? Uh, they aren't sure. Huh? They aren't sure. Okay, potentially.
Like an alleyway or something?
Just for like a buffer between lot one and lot two as far as not access, but maybe for privacy trees or something.
Oh, I see.
To kind of separate.
Okay, so that dark circle, if you look up on that darker area, is this portion of the track that you see? So those two properties basically are in this area. This third property down here has been sold, correct, Chase?
I have agreed on.
Okay.
Nothing official yet.
So one of the discussions was if we, if we take this and no longer make this a hard surface playground field, one of the things that HSR is looking at doing is trying to get a site survey as to, is there a better way to make traffic flow in and out of this for parent pickup, drop-off? And potential then at the last meeting Thursday, you know, here's our current playground, the soft area, it's got the rubber chips and things underneath it. Is, you know, making this area then maybe the hard surface playground area. So that was one of the things that was, that was brought forward.
So it wouldn't have, so it wouldn't have to double as a parking lot either? Correct, it could be just dedicated hard surface play. And, and then we can enhance the, the drop-off for the building next to the front door there. And perhaps improve the parking situation there also, so some definite positives there.
Is there more than one mine shaft in there?
One of them.
Is it covered?
This mine shaft is basically right where these trees are. And there's currently, would you say six inch or eight inch thick cement slab over the top. I have a really good view of it from my back deck. And I believe, I believe your uncle told me at one time that, that mine shaft actually runs north and south from, from this location.
Yeah, there's also a branch goes off to the left to the old Bogart house, because I lived in that house. The mine shaft goes across underneath Center Street.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's deep.
Chase, did you have a, like a final process after doing some of your research on what you had into it? Thirty to five, okay.
Would that come out of the referendum budget?
It, it could, if Chase could be a patient man. We also have Fund Forty-Six monies that would be available.
In the summer.
In the summer of twenty-twenty that we could finalize a purchase for capital maintenance, capital upgrades. As a, as a possibility of taking, taking money out of that fund as well.
I, so this is an action item. I'm going to make the motion that we purchase the lot two and three from Chase Ivy. What's that? Uh, for thirty thousand a piece.
So first one was sixty.
Yes, the whole of sixty.
Second.
I like, you're going to enter negotiations.
What is?
To do that, if you're talking about an easement.
I was just, I guess it was an action item as far as whether you're going to or not, I guess I don't know to get the ball rolling, but.
Chase, do you know, is the easement still run along the elementary building over to those, to those lots two?
Um.
There used to be one.
There used to be one, I think when they approved my easement off of Center Street coming in that way, that I guess I don't really know what happened to the other easement.
So right now there is a, a gravel driveway that comes up into this property at this location and that runs up to about this area, at least it's been, the gravel isn't up here, but you've had some mold. At least it's been, the gravel isn't up here, but you've had some mold.
The dirt was stripped up.
Up to this area.
So, so where are Rupert's on this?
So.
This way.
Oh, I see there.
Rupert's are down here.
Down there.
They're on.
Oh. Okay.
When they kick field goals, they kick it into this lot.
Correct, yeah. Okay. Now I got you.
And Chase, we also discuss as far as maybe our access would stay on our.
Yeah, the.
Land, maybe by the goal or by the scoreboard or something. So this would, so it would not interrupt the residential lot that's potentially sold.
You would still have to put that driveway in there to access that property no matter what, correct?
Lot one?
Yeah.
Yep. So there'd still be a driveway to it.
As far as, I don't know as far as an easement, because this is our, this is our property. And this is our property, so it's, it's basically, we're attaching it to it. There was, in essence, a right-of-way when, when Chase's uncle Bob owned this, because he used to put horses back in here, there was, there was a right-of-way that actually kind of came through the playground, kind of in this location. I know there's a fence put in down here for him to be able to access on that side as well. I don't know that we would want to route traffic around the soft play area as we're trying to eliminate all of that.
Or a field. The baseball diamond.
Or a hard surface or something.
That's why the, the easement by that scoreboard would not be.
There would be nothing that would keep us from extending this driveway to this property as well.
So are you in a big rush to get this finalized?
Not finalized, but you know, we need something ready sometime. Not, I'm not in huge rush. You're pretty certain.
All right, because it looks like to get it into our budget, we're looking at probably a year.
Yeah.
More or less.
I'll let the farmer know he can make more hay out of it.
It's about time for cutting to those.
Yes, I told him.
Brad, what percentage of this property would you anticipate using for, for school purposes in the immediate design concept?
I mean, when you have an opportunity like this to, to, to get a piece of property like this, I mean, it's going to be valuable whether it's now or down the road. There's no doubt about that. But you can kind of see that soft play area?
Yeah.
Or let's take the hard surface play area.
Yeah.
You know, you, you know, when you plot that out, it's going to take up a pretty good chunk of it already.
One thing we noticed, just being out at recess, the current grassy hill between the lot and the playground set is, I would say it's in kind of rough condition. It water pools there. And so a lot of times it's under water or it's muddy and it can't play on there. I mean, to remediate that, I would imagine it costs quite a bit, so.
Even getting a additional place, you can see it's a size. It isn't more than that with the hard surface. So we see it as a combination of hard surface and grass. That would be more better well-trained perhaps, so you're.
You're not thinking of any alternative entrance to that area from, from Center Street or Fifth Street?
No.
Yeah.
Well, not to the fifth.
Yeah, that's too far down.
Part of this, just because of where it's at, and location to it, and how flow of traffic could work if we did.
Telling you from the right price, this location right now. While we're making motions.
Well, I mean, should the motion be to enter negotiations with the intent to purchase or?
I'll change, I'll change my wording. I think you're, you're right. I'll change my wording to that, to start negotiations for the purchase of the two lots. I'll second it.
You're pretty sure that Fund 46 is what we'd be heading?
I, yeah, I would, because I think we can, and I will double check with the DBI. Put in a, I put in a call. It's summer for them as well, so I will continue to call to make sure that that's allowable expense in Fund 46.
Well, the idea of using referendum dollars for a year and then back to have a Fund 46, I don't think it'd be, either way we can do that, I just want to make sure.
In the GANF, it's by the purchasing plan. Which I can do. I'm going to continue to reach out to the DBI until I get an answer.
But essentially, if this motion passes, that basically gives you the authority to kind of complete the negotiations.
Until we approve a final purchase.
Right.
Or you, you want to, or you want to do it for the operational.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want to be super specific. I mean, I'm happy with Nate as chair of operations committee and my tour. You know, maybe the building committee coordinated.
So we have a motion.
So the motion is to start negotiations to purchase lot number three from Chase Ivy?
Yes.
And it was seconded by Tony. You're okay with that? It's your second? Okay. Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Steffes?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Basti?
Yes.
Short-term borrowing.
I sent out an RFP specifically on interest rate that would be charged to the school district to establish a line of credit for $1.5 million for short-term borrowing needs. I received a written communication from Woodford State Bank, and in the past, we have used Community First, Mount City, and Farmers Savings Bank. Three of the four responded. The best interest rate that we can be offered is through Farmers Savings Bank at 2.75%. So I would recommend that we go with Farmers Savings Bank for our line of credit short-term borrowing needs. Who were the other two? I think Mount City and Community First Bank were the other two that submitted. They were both up above 3%. I'll second Andy's motion.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a question, Andrew?
Bush?
I have one question.
Is a loan from last year all paid off and met? Is that how we do that?
Yes, we only have one operating loan, 1.5. Yes. And we only use it in terms of waiting for the state to provide our aid payment for us. We go to that, borrow what we need and then pay it back as soon as possible.
Would this be a possibility to use the line of credit to buy the land and reverse it with Fund 46?
It's a possibility. I just, the answer I'm waiting for from the DBI is, is that something Fund 46?
Right.
Can be, because we are using it for playground and some, some additional thing. Is that an allowable expense for Fund 46?
Okay. Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Abstain.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Steffes?
Yes.
Basti?
Yes.
Budget amendments.
Okay. In trying to clean up the budget, move monies around to the appropriate locations, if there was a surplus in one area to an area where we needed it, you can see that we're taking $104,821 and reallocating it into other budget areas. So it's basically just cleaning up the budget itself. It's not adding money, taking money away. It's just moving money into the appropriate budget places, making sure we're not negative in some places or that we have what we need and it needs to be approved by the school board to amend the budget this way.
Any questions? Any other questions or comments? Questions?
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Steffes?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Basti?
Yes.
Overnight trips can be approved by the building administrator unless it's out of state
and/or, in this case, out of country. Mrs. Wally?
And if any of you want to be chaperones out of country, we've had some brave people do it in the past. We had a group of 18 was our largest group last year of Costa Rica. So anyway, I'm here requesting approval for foreign travel and I've had 75 students say they're interested in foreign travel. So that would be at least 10 chaperones. And there's plenty of you at this table. Actually, I sent out a survey to those kids who are on this list. Not all of them filled it out, but they asked for, I asked them if they wanted to go to Puerto Rico or to Spain, because those were kind of the top two that we talked about. Do you want to pass?
Oh, sure.
Thanks. And, and it came up that about 10 kids want to go to Spain. I only need six to make it a viable trip, so the rest of them want to go to Puerto Rico. And I have checked, Puerto Rico is open for business and all the places that we're thinking about going to are have been up and running since last summer. So that being said, I guess I have kind of two questions. Number one, would it be okay if I pursue two trips, both to be taken in June of next year? Give me a week in between, if that's okay, so I can sleep? And then probably do the Puerto Rico one first. Don't want to get too close to hurricane season. And then if not, we're looking at Puerto Rico and the itinerary for the Puerto Rico trip is in front of you. We're going through, we're going to look at going through interact travel out of Green Bay again. We've done two trips with this school with them. I've done probably seven total with them. They're really great. I need like delays at airports, they always reroute us, everything gets, I don't know, any wrinkles get ironed out. There's always a tour person in country who travels with us. We travel on our own coach bus. There's, this one does not have a homestay option. The Spain trip does have a homestay option. The kids have told me they refuse to have a homestay on the trip, but I might be able to talk them into, into that. We'll see. It'd be a great opportunity. So I kind of just, of the highlights on your sheet, I put together a little slideshow. This is just Puerto Rico. This is our first stop. I wanted to show you the beautiful beach scene because, you know, everybody thinks that's what we're going to be doing the whole time. We're going to be visiting Old Town San Juan and then the church on the right is the oldest church in the western hemisphere. So it's kind of a neat thing. And then the Tenoch Indians, there's archaeological site. It's not really as exciting as like when you go to Mexico or some other places and you see the big pyramids, but they learn a little bit about the Tenoch Indians. And Almoro is a, is a fortress right on the coast. It's beautiful, very famous. It's one of the only, I think there's two national parks in Puerto Rico. One's the rainforest and I think this is the other one. We go to the rainforest and we get to swim under the waterfall and of course, travel around. This is kind of a crazy thing we're going to if we were to go on this trip is the observatory. They look for extraterrestrial communications. I don't know exactly what that means. It might be some, I don't know, government thing, trying to intercept things, I don't know. The next picture is, there's an area that we're going to, this beach area, and at night it glows.
Been there, that's great.
Is it? Is it? So, and then you can also go swimming at night and there's also during the day, we'll be doing some snorkeling, things like that. No, not at night, I wouldn't go swimming. It's a whole tour at night. So, and this is the area where it is during the day.
We had somebody fall in.
Where are we staying at? That's what I was.
Oh, you know, I didn't put those in. They're kind of, they're not the high-end hotels, but they're not, they're not motel eight either. We'll go visit a coffee plantation. It's not like a current one, it's a really old one and they'll show you, it's kind of historical. They show you how things were done in the old days. And then this is one of the castles they had there and then goes spelunking through some caves. I chose this picture to put on the slide because the other pictures look like cave of the mound. So there's that part of it too. It'll feel like they're at home. This is a little bit different. And that's what it is. It's about $2,500 for eight days and the trip to Spain, in case you're interested, is about $3,500 for the same amount of time. It's a little bit more expensive to go to Europe and.
Does that include in the meals?
It includes almost all the meals, yes.
For both?
Yep. Yep.
You go to Spain, I might.
Well, Ben is on the list for Spain.
I'm not real bothered.
And like I said, I have at least 10 kids interested. Now, I have 75 for the other ones and, you know, we usually get a lot of people drop out, but there's a lot of interest, so that makes me happy.
Do they kids go to Spain?
Yeah, there are different, it depends on like when you start. So I can't get dates or, you know, exact rates until I get board approval and then we go from there. So we all have information we're sharing after the school board meeting to get up and running and saving money and summer jobs and things like that.
So we have to, you have to seven.
Yeah, just because it's foreign travel.
Have you ever dealt with the EF?
What's that?
EF.
The EF?
EF.
EF, oh, yes, I have gone through EF before, actually to Spain. And they're pretty good.
They're, they're very reasonable.
Mm-hmm, they are.
I'm just curious. Julie, do you have someone?
Yeah, I'm curious. Since it's U.S. territory, it's still considered foreign travel?
Well, you don't need a passport to go to Puerto Rico.
Right.
I mean, that we approved the two trips.
I'll second. If you.
Both break.
Okay.
You still could do two trips, I hear.
If I hold up, yes. If we have six kids, then I can have the trip to Spain, a minimum of six kids. Yep, and there's 10 interested right now.
Do you want to be a chaperone for Spain? I'm showing it.
We need to have 12 then for you to come along. But, and it's the same way, six to one for chaperones.
All right. And how often do we do the trips once?
Every other year, so opposite the Cornwall year. And it's always in June, so it doesn't disrupt any school and it's after sports. Last year, we were a couple of days early. We missed baseball last year. That shed a lot of tears, but.
The policy reads outside the Midwest, Julie, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anybody have, can you have other questions?
I'll ask you again in a minute, but can we get the report?
Absolutely, yeah.
Report out, I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
To hear from the kids.
I think that would be great. Hey, we can do Costa Rica from last year if you want.
By the report?
Yes, oh, sure, absolutely. Can brush up on your skills. Bring Larry with you.
Just know every time we bring this up, I always make sure that you check with our insurance carrier, everything up to date.
I don't think you may do that too regularly.
Yep. And also, I always recommend that the kids and everyone has so far gets personal trip cancellation insurance and we go through memories, I think it's called memories and travel on the platform. So in case there were to be some kind of issue, a death in the family or someone gets sick, they don't lose, I think they lose $100.
It's not that expensive.
I think it was $97 for the insurance.
I remember exactly.
Because I just talked.
It's called a question, please.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Steffes?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basti?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
Okay, approval of that ad hoc committee.
So you have a policy that talks about being able to establish an ad hoc committee. You've talked about this for kind of representing us, all of us, as we go through this process, no one being a building expert, but there are people that we would actually be able to try to tap into that can represent the board. They have no, you know, according to your policy, they have no board authority to make decisions, but they can certainly be there to advise. So you can establish this board committee and then you can select the members to be a part of this. And then the last four things I think are the most important, a statement of the charge of the ad hoc committee, what, what they're supposed to do. You did that with the elementary planning committee, was basically an ad hoc committee and they would report back to the school board their role, deliberative advisory, that's what you're asking for, is that. That's what you're asking for, is that to be advisors. Identify approximate timeline for the completion of the tasks and delivery of any interim progress reports. So if you want them monthly or every other month, they come back to the board and report on what's going on. And then we would have to provide a notice of when those, with that ad hoc committee were to meet. So if you wish to create, formally create an ad hoc committee, we can approve that tonight, and then we can go into the process of selecting the members and adding them there and come back and give them exactly what their charge is moving forward. If you wish to do this, we can start that process this evening with the creation of an ad hoc committee.
I'll make the motion to begin the, to start an ad hoc committee for the school renovation.
I'll say.
Will this process move forward through the current building committee? As far as them recommending people for the committee and kind of designating the charge of the, of the committee? Or is this something that, and then come back for board approval? Or is this something we would be doing kind of informally over email before the next board meeting? How do you see this shaking out?
I would see this kind of almost work in conjunction with the current committee. You would have, you have at least two board members that have been able to make almost every one of those meetings. So you wouldn't want four board members on there, otherwise you make it a board meeting at that point in time. But then you can have other people that can lend their expertise to that, you know, as they get deeper into the design of the building and that project moves forward, being able to give more, I'll say, concrete advice to the district, to the school board as we move forward. Yeah, this is, this makes sense to explore this. It makes sense to, you know, here are things that you're going to want to ask, here are things, and even have HSR be part of those meetings so that it can move along and help the process move forward and maybe expedite the process a little bit more. So the responsibilities of this committee, Mitch, will be defined by the current design committee? By you? By us? The school board gets to make that determination. And time is somewhat important here, and I don't think we're going to wait until the July meeting to officially adopt this committee. But I'd like to get them in the design portion of the remodel in addition down there. First one.
When do we want to start basically telling names? Saying names to get in, just kind of refer to you and...
I have a name tonight. At least I, well, I mentioned, I can... I would, you know, yeah, you want to send me your signature, because I will make sure that all board members get those names, and then we can kind of move forward from there. Reach out and invite and see if everyone is accepting of that invitation or not. You might, you might get everybody that's interested. You might get a half, half of them. You might get one, but... And maybe through email, the board could give some guidance to you if the names chosen are okay with the board and get, you get that committee with HSR before the July meeting, and then we can officially adopt it in July.
Maybe the next, the next meeting, so...
As long, as long as you only email him and no other board members. You should make a careful look on...
Right, yeah.
Is he on email?
Yeah. I'll send a small signal.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Got any other comments?
How many members do we want to make? Yeah, I don't know that you would want to go more than, more than a dozen, you know. I, the hardest part would be being able to find times where everybody can meet as well. Matt?
I just have a question. What, is there any kind of general criteria in which you might be nominating people to be on the committee? Like, is there certain groups of stakeholders that you might want to pull from?
But I think you're certainly looking for people that have...
Definitely construction background. I mean, not a hundred percent of that, but some, I mean, some that have...
So is this strictly then just more of a building and designing group? Or is this, are you looking for input on, from all aspects of the educational experience?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so wouldn't that be just people that are...
Yeah.
Okay.
Brad, what do you, I mean, I saw you kind of shaking your head. What do you suggest on that, too? That you're familiar with that? Wide range. Yeah. Experience.
So can I just offer groups that might want to be involved in this? So I'd say, is that okay?
Yeah, just seeing that much, yeah.
I, well, if you're, but if you're...
What kind of groups are you thinking?
I'm thinking, well, I think that teachers might be well-served here. I think parents. What's that? Oh, yes, maybe support staff members, parents, community leaders. Those are the, the groups that come to mind right now.
Okay, do you?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments?
If we have names, give them to Mitch by the end of this week. Jeff, as you said, certainly plenty of time. Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Hi.
Stefis?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Bastin?
Okay, approval of the process.
We currently have and wish to continue agreement with the Iowa Grant School District. Basically, it's called a sixty-sixty agreement for a speech and language pathologist. They hold the contract for this person, and then we pay, in essence, twenty percent the time this person works with our students in our district. So we pay Iowa Grant basically twenty percent of that contract. So I'm seeking board approval, and we can send this back to the Iowa Grant School to continue that agreement.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any other questions?
Is twenty percent enough for us?
Yes, so there's currently forty-one students that receive speech and language services. So they have projected their split that our full-time personnel, thirty-five students, our case bench, thirty-five students, and she'll pick up the other six. I think it's pretty, pretty reasonable. The caseload of between thirty and thirty-five is pretty average for a speech and language pathologist.
Okay.
Stefis?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Hi.
Bastin?
Yes.
The other one, you like this price even more. Right here's the price to be, to continue to be a part of the boost consortium.
I make a motion to accept the boost, tell the presence...
Second.
Any other comments or questions?
Why, why is it zero? Some of the funds that we had paid in the past have continued to pay for some of the, I'll say, basically some of the maintenance, and we went with a different company. And the monies that were already part of the boost consortium paid for it all, so they're not looking for us to pay anything of this. So all the schools in it pay nothing, is it? Correct, but... Do you want to print this, any adjustments you've got on tomorrow?
I have it.
Okay.
I have them around till about three. Okay.
I have it all first, we should. Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Hi.
Stefis?
Yes.
Bastin?
Approval of the service contract.
Okay. We had a committee meet with Topher, and Aaron was board representative. I'll let Aaron kind of talk about his thoughts. Julie Pompos is here. Julie was also part of that conversation, so I'll turn it over to them.
Yeah, you have some?
If you want to summarize.
Okay. Well, I mean, we, so Topher is the vendor that provides food and has done for the last five years, and the contract up for bid, after it's been an RFP that then we got back was from Topher. And a very nice finder explaining things that they take pride in, you know, in terms of working with schools, trying to customize food service plans, getting input from parents, students, staff, you know, trying to do a wide variety, the meals made from scratch, promoting our farm-to-school program, doing food tastings, getting their chef to come visit the school on occasion, do those kinds of things. And the main discussion we had was we, was, there were just some concerns about a disconnect between the fact that all those things were kind of advertised, but not all of them were really happening.
This is part of their first RFP five years ago.
Right, right. And so we were trying to get a sense of, you know, why, why weren't some of these things happening to the extent that we felt was intended? And then, you know, what kind of, what kind of processes and improvements can we count on for the future, specifically this coming school year? So it was a pretty productive discussion, and I found the Topher representatives to be very sympathetic and understanding of our concerns and, you know, dedicated to the needs of the school district within their means. So, you know, some questions we had were, you know, what kind of things, what kind of improvements can, can you promise us for this school year? You know, and if so, would it change the proposed budget and overall cost of the plan for the year? One of the, one of the major concerns was the main representative that, that works in the district is Nancy. And basically, it just appeared that, that she had a lot of expectations placed on her that maybe could not be met within the number of hours that she was paid to commit to this school district. And I think an extenuating circumstance was, I don't know all the background, but I think there was another school district that needed extra help, and so Nancy was kind of covering that district in addition to our district. And so she couldn't do a lot of the things that she had intended to do with us. So, you know, we asked the Topher representatives to come tonight to kind of just give a chance to digest the concerns and questions we had from that meeting and, and present what, what they could, what changes they're willing to make under their current contract and bid for this year. And then we can discuss whether we want to honor the, honor our contract for a twelve-month contract or, can we do longer than that if possible? Or it automatically renews?
You, in essence, have a one-year contract that can be renewed for up to a total of five years. But basically, you go through that renewal every year. So in essence, it's a one-year contract. At the end of five years, which is where we are now, then you have to put it up for RFP, all right? Is it the same language as we've been under Mitch for the last five years as far as contract renewal? Or is it something? Well, I think what has changed from the first contract to this year is the involvement of the DPI, because we had to send the RFP off to the DPI for all of their approvals before we could release it to any companies. So I think that might, that language is a little bit different, but, but in essence, it is very similar language to, to the contract we have five years ago.
Do we have a cost comparison of what it costs to run our own food service with our own people compared to what it costs to contract it up?
That I do not have, and it's been five years since we've done that. So I don't know if I can get that from Marcia. I guess I could certainly ask her for that.
I'm probably running that tone because of the late nature. It would be really hard to, I go back to us doing it ourselves at least this year.
Before, just to interject, before we got here, you did have a shared partnership with the food service director in Mont Cora. So it was, I think it was thirty, you know, twenty percent of her time was, you know, was split between the two districts. So that, I think that was a, since you, I'm not sure exactly how long that went for, but it was two or three years, I think, before they decided to outsource and have their own director on site. What we had, we had come to mention, we had a neighboring district without a food service director, so we shared Nancy's time. And in it, in kind of the same model that you have before, actually, there's a cost savings to sharing a salary between two districts. And it was a model that Mitch so graciously said, yes, you know, we'll try it. We do appreciate that, that model to help a neighboring district. And we learned that that's not where we want to be, you know, here in Mineral Point and have a full-time director here in Mineral Point, and that would be Nancy. Some of the concerns that were addressed in our committee meeting really were just the amount of processed foods that, you know, that, you know, their kids are being offered at the elementary school. And, and we talked about, you know, kids eating habits have changed over time, and that's what they recognize. And we had a healthy discussion and about offering more from scratch menu items at the elementary level, and that's certainly doable because we have tons of recipes. And with Nancy's leadership and her ability to, to know how to really multi-cook for the multitudes is, you know, that, that's what plays into it. So we had a healthy discussion on that. We also agreed that we would actually look at the finances in a couple of months and just say, okay, we're going to work, move down this path, and we're going to collaborate and get kids to eat healthier and more from scratch items. And it really has to be a learning and education all around for parents. And it's not like, well, I just want chicken nuggets. Well, you know, we want to encourage the kids to try the lasagna or whatever is on the menu for that day, so our lunch counts don't go down. And we do monitor the meal counts consistently per the whole district. And we're committed to doing that. And we're really committed to working with Julie and, and, you know, working on, you know, what that looks like for the elementary school. I will say that most of the high school kids do embrace more from scratch cooking, the cooked items. They really do enjoy the homestyle meals up here. And so that's a good thing, you know, that really is good. Any questions?
Yeah, do you ever involve the student council with that discussion, like in the high school, middle school, or...
We, go ahead.
I did, I did approach earlier in the year the faculty advisor for the student council, and we were going to get together. And again, first of all, and not to make this a holy excuse, this was really challenging here for me, whether it be shortages of staff or knowledge or training or whatever. So trying to get together on both ends, as me with the faculty advisor and the students, that again kind of fell by the wayside. But I had, no, but I had had a lot of discussions with students every day or going out to the cafeteria, asking, you know, or seeing, or them coming up to me and saying, you know, could we see this or could we do this? So yes, you know, it is a matter of surveys, which Julie was so gracious to do, and it could be, you know, done. But it's not like, oh, sure, kid, go away, I'll give it to you later or whatever. But it's like, no, hey, that's a good idea. Why can't we? Or why, you know, let's do this. I was talking to the committee the other day. Didn't know that I could have resources available, that I, there's people out there that I can reach out to, and now, hey, this could work. You know, maybe there's a mom that's, you know, not doing anything in lunchtime and wants to show the kindergartners how to, or what this is, or how to use it, or, yeah. So that, you know, that, to see your mom or your dad or whatever involved with that, I had no, you know, problems with that. It was just a matter of...
I understand, but if they do that, do they have to assume the screening, you know, as far as, you know, being a food handler?
Basically, what it would be is like something in a cup, a sample cup, like... Um, basically what it would be is like something in a cup, a sample cup, like you would do at the grocery store. And then they would just say, this is what it is, it's grown, you know, blah, blah, and today we have dinner. Costco. So, you know, it'd be explaining to them, so it's a little bit of education at lunchtime. And I found, um, in my experience, putting it on a cart and going up and down the house after the kids were sitting down, instead of waiting to get that cup and being all excited and not, you know, you know, checking out their number or forgetting their number, um, to go up and say, okay, today we have this and would you like to try it? Uh-uh. You know, and then my, my persuasion is, can't say you don't like it until you try it. You know, so just a little, just a little thing with the students. When I am at the elementary school, I do wash tables. I'll get out there with the ladies that do and I'll talk to the kids there, you know.
I've seen them, I've been there eating, uh, I've eaten there several times. Uh, now, another question, what do you do with the uncollected, um, funds, you know, the people that aren't paying? How do you approach them? What do you guys do?
There is a, um, a notice at the middle school, high school level, there is a notice they are able to purchase anything extra. Um, so far I've not shut down anybody or turned.
So they still get the meal, they just don't get the compensation?
Correct. I have called parents, you know, that weren't aware, which are getting a phone call or those all the time. So, you know, that is going on, but, um, it, we were looking at one week of maybe this family would have to be offered that cheese sandwich or whatever, and within two days there was a payment. So, you know, it's a matter of talking to the parents and seeing what's going on in life or whatever. And then you've got a situation though too where they've sent checks that were insufficient.
Yeah, when they looked at your balance, you looked like you're running at a loss because of ineptness.
And negative balances.
Negative balances.
Right.
So then how do you do that?
Well, well, historically in kids' lunch accounts, if the positive balances are higher than the negative balances, and I don't know what they are, the cash flow is fine. It's when the negative balances, the cash flow is more than the positive.
Sure.
And I don't know what our positive and negative balances are.
It's minus 9,000, I saw the last, I looked at it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyway. Well, the, the district should have a lunch balance policy. A couple of years ago, you said, we have, I mean, all districts should have a lunch balance policy and we have that and we're just, you know, and usually at the elementary, we're not, I mean, you know.
Well, you can't do too much with the cash, right?
Especially meals like gluten-free and things like that or?
They're available if we're aware and, um, Julie and I had talked about that. When she gets that student that has it, cause we went to a class last, um, fall for special color jeans or dietary needs, and so far we haven't had anything where they requested those types of things. And then I do have a vegetarian student that I'll make sure, oops, I'm making more to call three, I'll make sure that, that is on.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, you know, to your point, Dr. Diaz, we did a comprehensive survey throughout the district and it was student-based and hand-parent staff. So the results were overwhelmingly positive to keep Topper on. And like Dr. Dunn said, you know, there was just some minor tweaking and things that were in there written contractually, you know, that we'd like to see augmented.
Yeah, well, some of the kids, they seem to be happy. I've done some, I have those man, and they seem to be happy.
And the thing is, I think it's worth noting though, when you ask, you know, what would it cost to have an independent or a non-third-party vendor do a third food service, it, it's really important to remember that the, uh, knowledge, the regulatory knowledge that Nancy possesses, you don't find in just anybody that likes to cook.
Right.
You know, you're not going to find that because the intricacies of the USDA are so overwhelming and she knows them inside and out and, and she's such a repository of knowledge. And so as Lisa, that it, that takes a lifetime to accumulate. So you can't just say, you know, cost analysis, how are we going to get this expert in our building?
I wonder why all this is the food sector for schools.
So, you know.
Yeah, I know.
Is it a guy or?
He's just retired, if you want to say, probably right there.
As a lady now, yeah.
You probably have seen him before.
Julie, can we get a copy of that survey? I'd like to see it.
Um, yes, it's, uh, do you want an executive summary or do you want all of it?
I want all of it.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're doing a good job, Julie.
There was, there were some, there were multiple requests for more access to like a salad bar. I know you can't have a veggie bar, which is great. And you had mentioned in the, on the phone that maybe you could commit to once a week or something like that. So did you, have you guys talked about?
I started thinking about that after.
Whether that's really doable or not?
Um, uh, but in reality, while we were thinking like every day, but you know, you still have that food and vegetable bar, but there is a way that I could set up that other, like we call it the diner station, to have access for that, to be a full-blown, like you're asking salad bar, but still they would have access to that slider. I don't know if you ever seen the setup, there's like a slider, like you see it, um, quick trip that has hot sandwiches ready, we could just go up and grab it.
Oh, yeah.
So they would still have that option, the classic lunches and then the wraps or the sandwich that's in the cooler. So that day you did run the salad bar, which could be maybe opposite of pizza or whatever, you know, the.
Or if we had another piece of equipment to, we also do it, you know, a bar in a different location, probably not on the line, which would help the line form too, possibly. So there's some different things that we, we've picked around and maybe starting with one day or two days and then if it's really popular, we can certainly, you know, I know you said every day and, and maybe we want to start with every day, but it's certainly negotiable. It really is.
Okay, and you would need a, you would need the district to purchase at least the equipment to, to make that happen?
Well, I think, I, we were talking about a refrigerator unit, uh, but also too, just to bring up a point, um, being in other districts, when they have that option available, it's tiered pricing. So it's a little bit higher because the students do have that option of taking a little bit more or, you know, like when you heat at the hospital, they weigh your salad bowl, you know, because we have all those choices or whatever. So, and options would be, um, where we could cup it and portion it.
As far as the protein, so that's where the regulations, you know, but, you know, some schools that do it, they cup the protein so there's only a certain amount of, you can have three cups or four cups. Or you just let everyone serve themselves and it ironed out, hopefully some take less, some take more, but they can be kind of costly if there's a lot of people taking more, which is why they weigh it at a hospital or a grocery store. But we can also set up a way, I mean, I've done, I've weighed it in a school lunch program too. There's multiple ways and it's up for discussion and we're certainly open to, to try and ensure. And, and the other thing is, is sometimes if people are using it, it's great, but there's a lot of crap that goes into it. So if only five people take the salad bar, then it's, and, um, we have run a salad bar in Beaverdam High School this year because, um, of a piece of equipment that, and we just went through a building project, so it's very careful and I've very enjoyed listening to all the discussions that you're very articulate on, on all the details, but, um, but anyway, it's gone very well in Beaverdam and hasn't really, um, we didn't weigh it, we didn't, it was a little higher price, I think 325 was the lunch price, but free reuse kids can get that as well, because that's by USDA law and it really hasn't affected our overall food cost, so that's been good and started out slow, but it's been, it's been popular, so.
Great.
Yeah. I'll give you pictures of that, or how it looks and stuff, but, um, yeah, so we've been running it every day at Beaverdam High School for the school year and.
I heard, I think that, uh, staff members have said to me that if there was like a salad bar or something salad bar, they, they would probably eat every day.
Yeah, and we do offer soup too every day there.
My, my concern as far as the middle school, we're that second lunch.
Yeah.
And we get up there and there's been some times where that second option isn't available. It's, you know, it gets sold out or there's only a, you know, a few sandwiches left and then those darn sixth graders take them because they get to come there first. And so then, so the eighth graders get in line and then they don't have that second option and then they have to go to the end of the line because I make them go to the end of the line, but, and they may not necessarily like that other option. So I, I would like to see that improved. I think if there's two options for the high school lunch, there should be two options for the middle school lunch.
Well, that's why I try to monitor that, that's why they're counting and that's why the others are going right away, so they may have a little bit of a wait, but, you know, they still have that available for them. So, um, and again, to be there, you know, watch it and make sure, um, so, or I, you know, um, right.
That's why you have to wait a few more minutes.
Or go back and get your, um, vegetables and come back and, you know, you know, thanks kids and, you know, whatever. But I do my best to try not to have that happen and unfortunately it does because, or if it is a popular item, I won't let the high school purchase that second right away until I know exactly what I have going on, you know, for the kids that are going to.
It's probably the balance because some of the items cannot reuse once, once they're made.
Correct. Right, so it's.
But I agree with Nikki that we should try to at least have the option.
Yes.
What do you do with leftovers? Do you guys repackage that sometimes and?
Depends on what it is. You know, I mean, if it's something that's on a bun, it's been wrapped, it's pork loin.
I'm just, cause I've seen some districts, you know, where they'll repackage and then sell it to, or not, I don't know if they sell it, but give it to maybe, yeah, give it to families that may need that at the end of the day or something.
Somebody was asking me about that and I had to find the answer because of it coming from the school, how long is it gonna be sitting somewhere? You know, I, I wasn't quite sure, you know, about that. So that's what I did pursue, um, looking, you know, asking questions to see if other schools did that or, um, and then it was brought to my attention that the teacher in the classroom would take care of it. Well, then I started thinking, well, you're gonna have food in the classroom, that's probably not a good option either, um, for, um, storage, you know, maybe, you know, spoilage or whatever. So if there was a way that I could put it out there and they, you know, would say, hey, Nancy, is there something going on?
Well, there's nobody liable, but, yeah, safety part is something.
That would be the only issue. Or, you know, they could contact me or, you know, if there was somebody that was, okay, I can put this in the cooler and without, you know, it being, you know, anonymous or whatever, you don't want to embarrass anybody.
Are we moving forward with the same terms of the last contracting then?
Yes.
That would be part of that, that RFPs. Nothing's changed.
And you'll have Nancy back five days a week.
That's a big change.
And that was just since February 16th, but she's been.
And how many hours per day does Nancy get?
A lot. Well, that's, that's my, there's a, um, that's my decision.
Right.
Because it's the way I like to be here early at five.
Yeah, this is really hard to her.
I was just.
And then because it's a, it's a matter of paperwork in the kitchen, but with talking with Lisa and talking to the committee, now they have that, um, I basically talked about a, a lead, another lead cook that's trained, so now I can go and do.
So one of the advantages of going through, living through the model that we just did is that, um, we, when Nancy was gone, we had to train other people to, um, function while she was gone, so she wouldn't have to be there. So one of the things that we discussed is those two, two days a week that she was gone, now she's gonna be here and those people are still gonna function in that role and so she can do, you know, the tastings and things like that, so.
The last question I have, all of the hot foods prepared at this site, correct?
Both sites.
Both sites?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright.
That, um, like, some of the recipes I do, like if it's a turkey roast, I'll cook them up and freeze them and then I send them to the lunch table and they're.
Alright, that's gross.
Or like sloppy joe or meat or, you know, some.
Well, no sadly, sadly.
On a daily basis.
Okay. And one more question.
Yes, Dr.?
So basically the committee recommends that we go with Topper for the next school year. That's what the committee recommends. And, um, in the meantime, there's an intent to basically investigate what it would take for us to, to do this on our own in coming years and kind of compare logistics difficulties, costs of that versus, you know, when it comes time to renew Topper for year two. And, um, like Julie said, you know, I think things are going well for the most part, there are a lot of extenuating circumstances of difficult unit staffing. Nancy is extremely committed to the district, um, I think that's a huge advantage. Um, and they agreed to meet with this committee or at least with Julie and some, um, staff representatives on a regular basis to make sure that we're, to make sure they're meeting their marks for the year.
This committee, will it meet again?
It will.
Yes. So through the building renovation, maybe that committee gives some insight, maybe in some enhancements or upgrades possibly that would encourage kids to partake in the Hot Lunch program.
Yeah.
I, that's almost a big loaded question, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think we want to make sure that the kitchen is.
Equipped properly.
Is equipped properly and upgraded depending on what your intents are for using the kitchen in the elementary school side versus the high school. Um, you know, and I think the, the, it's intended to continue with the school garden, you know, and, and kind of expand the connections with the kitchen and, and school garden peruse, um, cause that's been a, that's been a good thing that they could be more utilized.
Some, some schools, whether it's middle, high school or elementary school you go to and you witness their cafeteria area, I mean, it just looks fun. And I can imagine that plays into the participation with the Hot Lunch program.
Right.
Current setup.
Well, that's what they were saying, that the tables would stay set up with like in the cafeteria now with, with the move forward, um, you know, those types of things. And then, may I just say one thing? Your line for the little kids, that's really hard. For those ladies, they're constantly, you know, they have to take the tray and put the food on the tray for the kids. So that line setup maybe to be lowered or.
We could readdress that line setup.
Something that way.
Be a part of that.
Because, you know, the kids don't take their tray, the ladies do it for them and it is a reverse of serve, so they have to ask them every question, you know, would you like, would you like, you know, so that type of thing.
I mean, for, just for example, how many places do we, do you eat dock without windows? It's not fun to eat in.
Right, right, right.
Larry, we also talked about, uh, potentially replacing the tables. The tables we have are fine, but I'm like an army bear, it's kind of just so long, so long tables.
Oh, yeah.
So we look at more of a community and like a round table. Just takes like more.
Yeah, so it's sensitive, there's an opportunity that they, wonderful to start to talk about what's that with, like.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion. We have to talk to the, to the school.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other comments?
Can we just get the, uh, the 18, 19 financials when they're completed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate those soon?
We're gonna.
By the end of June.
Okay. It's called a question, I imagine.
Hi.
Stefis?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
No.
No. Dunn?
Yes.
Bastin?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the preliminary design for the elementary.
Brad, Tim, you might want to speak this a little bit at our last meeting on, on Thursday. We're just kind of getting, you know, basically other designs that you maybe have explored and what this potentially can do for you, for you.
Yeah, and I don't think by any means are we at a final state, to be honest, until it's constructed, until we're actually occupied space, even then you'll start, you know, more food portions or something. So I don't want to put any kind of final, uh, but what we want to make sure is that we're continuing in the path that, um, that we all agreed to and that we, everything got built on each other and, um, that we're just continuing the moment we go forward for anything. Um, those are the continued conversations and fine tuning and, uh, every time you kind of look at the plan, hopefully you find something that's bad particles conversation evolution really more than anything.
And some of the other things that we explored, obviously we looked at the referendum plan more, a little more thoroughly and we didn't feel really good about presenting that. We thought we should explore something a little different for a variety of good reasons. And then, uh, we explored the gym location in different spots. Obviously that's the biggest chunk of the piece of the puzzle here. Um, we looked at it kind of on the south side, I guess, just, so, yeah. Different, different spots on the building and, and it just seemed to not really work the way we were hoping to. Um, and, uh, and then the, the classroom piece too, where the, you know, the whole classroom thing versus the library, and this is kind of what we ended up doing at Arnville too, is we, we thought about the library as more of a hub of the building and the ability to, to solve that problem, which we feel is a significant challenge for you right now when you're existing, building the library. Um, it doesn't really service up well in terms of a multipurpose kind of facility, space. We've seen that firsthand with some of the meetings that we've had. We felt if we can enhance that, um, the classroom things are fairly easy to solve. So we thought putting. to solve. So we thought putting, putting the money into that as well as the hub, as well as the gym, as well as solving water problems, as well as, you know, a lot of other things, really starts to kind of fall into place in our minds and becomes fairly logical in our minds, quite honestly.
And yet, some of what you're proposing all hinges on what the site borrowings play out as well?
It does a little bit, yeah, but again, I think we have better opportunity with this plan if we have problems or not problems. Because I think whether there is challenges with the borrowings that we find, I think we still feel that this plan is really tremendous direction to take, not only immediate, but clearly the long term for that building. We're not just helping a part of that building, we're helping the whole. That's really an important piece. And I think way back when, when I started talking to you guys about doing a project like this, it's more than just thinking about an addition to the building, it's thinking about the entire building and how we can make that existing building down for what we do to it, whether it's at our, that's what the goal is here at this point.
In this kind of initial design conceptual process, are there some, are there some needs that have been expressed or that you've seen that kind of, oh man, if we had just a little bit more money, maybe we could do this, or whether it be additional classrooms, bigger classrooms, maybe more office space, or something different? And what I'm getting at, let's say the foundation, the remediation is less than expected, and it's like, thank goodness, it's not as bad as we thought, what would you kind of add to the design as far as some needs that you maybe are kind of satisfactorily meeting, but you'd like to meet better?
Yeah, so I guess we're really at the point where we're gathering all the needs. You know, we're having many conversations with staff, with the committee, with you guys, truly gathered those needs, and then we're really at the point where we're starting to prioritize those. So a lot of the things, so even electrical needs, you know, we need more helmets, you know, we need more storage. Some of them are showing on print, some of them are just in notes at this point.
Right.
You haven't tuned that development. I think we're capturing by far all the needs and we were trying to, you know, really work within the footprint, but also do what we think is really best long term as well and really spending wise investment. So it's that balancing act.
But like you said, Tim, as we develop and with the staff more, there'll be things that will come up that will, and you jump up to a little higher priority than others and some might go down a little bit. But the idea is that the concept is something that's really got some good meat behind it and something easily to work within that framework. That's, that's really an important aspect of this thing.
Can we go back to that, the drawing that Mitch had up earlier? I really like how you have that room and that library connected to our existing building. However, we just talked about creating an advisory committee, and I think it'd be shortchanging now to, to iron this down at this point without any input from, from them.
Right.
And I think we're like a month too early on this.
Okay.
Nailin' down the, basically what you're asking for is if the board's okay with the gym and library set, correct?
Just the conceptual layout of the plan, that's all we're looking for. And again, if you don't feel comfortable, that's perfectly fine.
We have some room before, so we'll leave this for you for a little stand. Grapes, I'm sorry, you interrupted. Grapes are harvested in the month, so there's grape and mint infused water.
Thank you.
Nice.
So again, as we get more input, it's going to be fine tuned, you know. And again, how that, how it ends up looking might be a little different than this. But again, I think the concept of, is kind of the idea that we're talking about here.
Just an overall approach, but yeah, we do definitely want some more feedback. We'll continue to have feedback.
I get the sense that approving this design, Larry, doesn't necessarily set anything in stone, but just kind of says, you're heading in the right direction, keep following this concept in terms of more detailed vision, you know what I'm saying?
And I think words of encouragement, just like that goes just as far as approving this tonight on the agenda myself.
Yeah.
Along, the committee along with the borrowings and results from them, in July we should have a lot of information.
We'll have more information, yep. And then the next month we'll have more, it'll just, it's a, it's a psychological round of discussion. And that's why this part, first part of it is so critically important, and you don't want to rush this, because there's some strategic decisions that are being made here that are critical to the long term, fifty years.
Right.
So that, that's really important to take the time.
And if you look at the timeline, I mean, here it is already middle of June, you're going off the bid in January, so it's not, we don't want to take our time either.
Put off that timeline.
Months actually go by fast.
That's right, so we want to keep moving comfortably and, you know, but...
So here, we're talking timeline, so here is our timeline that we're tracking towards. So here we are, bottom of them, I'd say we're exactly where we want to be. We're in educational programming and investigation and we're continuing to push against those concepts. And you'll see, leading up to January, the bid date is really making sure that we have incremental milestones as we go throughout this entire process. So it does allow for a lot of feedback as we continue here.
Can I just request that after each building committee meeting, that some kind of summary with maybe any slides that you shared, like, let's say you shared this with the building committee, or you shared a design, that it just goes out to the board as an FYI? I think, I don't know who would be responsible for that, Mitch or...
I don't think we actually have a building committee, that's the only thing. I think it's been put out there to those that can attend, so I don't...
But I agree with Doc, I do think...
Well, I do, I agree with the committee, but I'm just saying, I don't think we've ever phoned us a building committee. So when you asked for a report, I thought, what committee is that? You know, I mean, I agree, it should be disseminated, but we don't have a committee that I know of.
Somebody on that, somebody from the meeting needs to send out an update to the board. I wasn't able to, I'm...
See, I don't agree.
When they have a committee, you'll have a chairperson as soon as we get it established, in a couple of weeks. But it's maybe just report out until that point, just so it's not complicated when we receive our information.
We can make that available.
Okay. I mean, maybe something needs to be better formalized. I mean, it's my understanding that there's kind of a core committee that includes superintendent, you know, administrators, maybe a board member or two, the buildings and grounds person. Is it too premature to be, is forming that committee, is that what?
No, I don't think it's too premature. I think that's why we did the ad hoc committee tonight. But that's going to be that committee, right?
Correct. Moving, yes, moving forward.
Oh, okay, so that will, that will be the...
That would be you, and you set the charge, you set the charge for what you want that committee to do for you.
The board's going to do that?
Yes.
So the ones that have been going to all meetings pretty much, are they going to stay on as ad hoc versus is ad hoc going to be completely separate?
No, I think it makes sense to continue, you know, if those members can continue to be in attendance, I think it makes perfect sense to do that. I guess what I would ask, you know, you guys put together the agenda, you could send that agenda to me prior to meetings and I can send it out to board members on that first question. You can direct it back to me and we can make sure that they're covered and then kind of read and report out until we get this ad hoc committee established and up and running.
Matt's been sending out pretty good notes, I thought, too, with his emails, I thought.
Right.
Pretty much.
Right, and I know you can give a brief summary on your Friday email, which I appreciate. You know, I mean, it, how do you typically, I mean, what do your committees look like in your other projects with other...
Similar to what you're...
Districts?
Yep. Some do it just with the school board, but most would have a committee as you're describing.
Okay. And really, what the, the committee has been looking at is exactly what we see tonight, just the draw, the drawings.
Well, there's been some input, you know, I mean, it's changed the interaction with that input, which I think is...
There's been a lot of changes.
Lot of changes, if you ask me, yeah.
Like the first two or three drawings.
It's far better than the very first one that we...
Oh, I would agree, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's been a little long.
To Aaron's point though, but then most of you are left out if you can't be there soon. I think that should be reported to everybody.
And I think there should be a committee that authorizes the project firm to do, you know, to do things going forward.
Don't you think they should all come back to the board as a whole?
Well, I mean, we're all super that it is.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't want to decide where the light fixtures go. You know, I don't want to...
You can do that.
We'll get a, that will be the charge, is bring us design suggestions, bring us, so that we're informed at that point on things we don't have knowledge of and we can make an informed vote. Because we're the only ones that have that power to us by the committee.
Right, but we could designate, we could delegate that power to a committee, or certain powers to a committee if we wanted to. And I, I just want, I'm just trying to get a sense of how this is all shaking out month to month, but maybe I just need to digest things a little more.
I think one of the earlier discussions we had prior to the first of the year, I think, was even some of that authority, you know, you could give me some authority to make some of those decisions, you know, not, not the $5 million decision, but, you know, in, you know, in cooperation with Roger and the knowledge that Roger has in past projects, you know, we can certainly make some of those decisions if that's what you wish and not have to bring, should the light switch be on the right side of the door, on the left side of the door, decisions back to you. But, you know, I mean, there's certain things that you can do and designate, not necessarily the ad hoc committee having that authority, but there are ways that you can do that.
I guess I just need help understanding, what, what does the board need to approve at these meetings and what, what decision making are we delegating to at a committee level?
And we really, I would say, there hasn't been any decisions made at any of these meetings. You know, it's like, hey, maybe you want to meet with the staff, the elementary staff now. So HSR came down and spent the day working with...
It's been very generic.
I would say so, so it hasn't been any decision making going on yet.
It's all been informational, fighting information, talking to people. That's why it's important to get the city or the other people that are interested from, you know, taxpayers and teachers and so forth, we got to continue to get that information so that these guys can get to a final thing for us to be able to say, yeah, we agree. And then it's going to be the committee that really take over the...
So each one of these is really set up as a milestone. So you see at the end of each phase, there's basically a milestone and that's maybe a perfect opportunity to take it to a greater all, more to the foreboard at that point, to give really a recap or whatever. But there are, you know, throughout this, there are milestones that we want to achieve for both the budget and for the program as well. So we can adjust those and keep those conversations, but there is time to have those conversations.
Okay. So what you're asking for tonight is approval of the, of the design?
I think it's...
Can we call it conceptual design then?
I think it's just that we're moving, that we all feel comfortable moving in the direction that we're going, that's really all we're probably looking for, or, you know, just keep continuing on the path that we are, is really all we're looking for.
And is anybody else concerned about this advisory committee that we're going to develop that they won't have a say in that design?
Well, I don't think that's what we're saying.
I, I have a little problem, I open up Pandora's box where we...
I understand.
Ten different opinions. I think this is a very nice design.
I like it too.
Yeah, within the budget, I, I think you have to pick a path and then stay with it. And I think they're giving us the best bang for the buck, depending on these core borrowings and, you know, the catskin of the building.
Do you want to make that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept this design and move forward.
Thank you. To your point, Larry, I'm not really sure what the advisory committee is going to look like, what the charge to the committee is going to be, but obviously don't have plenty of input.
If I vote no, it's not going to be because of the design, it's going to be because of the advisory committee.
Understood, yep.
Okay.
Okay, Angie, let's call a question, please.
Lindsay?
Hi.
Stepas?
No.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. So let's go to approval of staff hire. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
If you wished a whole office in a closed session for this, but your recommendation is Erin Sincox, a high school science position. Erin is coming to us from Sebastopol. She is currently working on getting her master's degree in physics. She has taught physics and chemistry. She did her student teaching here and has worked with Mr. Stagger in the high school prior and basically is giving us all of the certifications that our former science teacher had, so we're not really missing a beat on what we can offer our students.
And when she obtains her master's, she will be able to teach AP, Chem, Science?
Cap is what we would be looking at, having her do. She has to be teaching for five years, so she's got a couple of years before she would do that, but then students could be taking basically a college level physics class from her, obtain the correct grade and have three credits through UW Ashesh.
I asked this question about retention in the sense that, is she from Dodger?
She is from Dodger. She is a Dodger student. This, this makes me feel old, but when I was in the middle school, principal position in Dodger, she was a middle school student.
Really, you gave that hold? Thanks. So do you want to put that on hold until after closed session? Or you want to go ahead?
Either, either way, if you want to wait till closing.
I think a motion waits.
Okay.
Stepas, a second.
I'm just curious, what is step six? I mean, she went off topic. It is, it's like $44,000 and something. Basically, we matched her salary at Sebastopol. She was offered a position in Pot Mill for more money and was willing to turn that down to come here as we matched her current salary, basically.
I think she'll be a great addition to our...
Lindsay?
Hi.
Stepas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to credit cards.
I have a question. Angela, EPI educator licensing fee for $100, renew.
So special education assistant, renew a license, they get their license for five years, we pay 75 of that dollar, 75 of it and they reimburse us the other 25, it's written into the book that way.
I didn't have that.
So...
No, I mean, regular teacher, I forgot that one.
No, but, but the, in a special education assistant, we sponsor their license at a district, that's how the form is written, so.
Can we have a motion to approve both credit card and both cable?
So moved.
There's one second, Danny.
I'll second.
I had a question here on this, the storage room on Ridge Street. What's that, John, who's getting $3,300?
That's for a year. It's the old school.
Okay.
And we, we pay $3,300 for so many square feet, which we're well over and they don't charge us anymore for that, but we use that area for some storage.
Is the contract of waste management, is that through the city or is, I just wanted, because the tonsill that we found with Fairies were a lot cheaper. That's on Phase 39.
Thank you. I'm not sure how that is set up. I don't know if that was something, you know, if it's a multi-year contract, but I can certainly look into that.
Well, because Fairies, there's a platform, they were a lot, lot cheaper than waste management.
I think it was a contract, I think it was like three years.
Okay.
I don't remember right.
I don't know when, do you remember when? I can look back through the files.
Couple of years ago.
Okay. And maybe we're at, maybe this is...
Kind of close, I think.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So furniture, from Lake Shore's earning materials, was that for this school?
No, mostly elementary, and that was part of the flow-through spend down.
Okay. Okay.
And of course, it will be reused and. Yes. Yeah, I believe a lot of it, it will be used, start of the school year next year, it'll be in place and being used.
Any other questions?
Just the tech head lab, computers, was that a safe?
Yes.
From the twenty nineteen?
Yes, that was part of the technology budget, like, if you had it now, it took that dollar amount out of next year's budgets.
Okay, any more?
Put a bug in Todd's ear to see if he would check with our fuel supplier about contracting fuel for next year.
Okay.
He's ever done that.
You're talking about diesel.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thought we did that over here.
Contract with the. Block the pricing.
Block the pricing.
The way we did that, the start of it.
Who's talking? Who said Todd?
For buses.
Todd to touch. Right, yeah.
So, okay, good question. Any other comments? Angela, just call a question, please.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Hi.
Stepas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
I need you to go back up. You skipped over approve the preliminary budget in nineteen-twenty, number nine there, under action items.
I don't have it.
Don't you?
I don't have it.
Late addition.
Sorry. He emailed us. I didn't. Tell you what I want to do.
So I, I didn't notice you, you just kind of hired employees here, so I didn't notice you.
Oh, yeah. Not having these.
So what I gave you was a copy of where we stand currently in our, in our budget, so you see, and I will use this term loosely, and that surplus of fifty-six thousand dollars, I would not say that that's a surplus, I would say it would be zero, and that money is going to be going back to capital maintenance budgets for next year, so in essence, you gave Roger the authority to use up to a hundred thousand dollars of fund balance, that money will go back to, to Roger, so it would be a balanced budget. And I would need prelim, approval of the preliminary budget in order for us to continue now making purchases for the nineteen-twenty school year, things that we can order now and have in place for the start of the school year. This still does not have anything from the state. I have been told potentially a hundred and seventy-five dollars per pupil.
Another question.
Or, that would be passed on to the taxpayers, and twenty-five dollars per pupil would come in categorical aid, so we would be looking at two hundred dollars per pupil, they, the Republican proposal split it that way, so, but I haven't still, you know, nothing's gone through to be signed by the governor yet, but it seems like both sides are looking at a two hundred dollar per pupil increase.
So eighteen, nineteen, are we in a surplus, do we have a surplus? Showing four hundred, two thousand.
Well, that would be, that would be as of the second of May, so none of the May payments, none of those kinds of things are in there, so, yeah, it won't be, I can guarantee it won't be that, that kind of a surplus.
Okay. So you want a motion to approve?
The preliminary budget.
Okay.
I'll make that. Second.
Any other comments or questions?
Just to be clear, the fifty-six, nine oh four will be then moved to Roger's account as his initial budget for the year.
Yeah, if this were October.
Then we're trying to get into one hundred thousand.
Right, if this were October, I would present this as zero, there would, it would be a completely balanced budget, because that money would have been put into Roger's accounts at that point in time, so yes, when, when additional funding comes in, there are some other things that we know are priorities, part of it would be getting, getting that capital maintenance budget back to where it was.
This preliminary budget has stated as Roger's capital maintenance budget is zero.
Correct, okay.
Okay. Any other comments? It's called a question, please.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Hi.
Stepas?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes. Do we have a motion to go into close session? Second.
Second.
Call it, please.
Dunn, or, excuse me, Dahl? Dunn?